We're thankful for this town and its residents. We're grateful for all the work, the betterment of our community, and all they serve on its behalf. Let those who work here and those who serve here be ever mindful of the town's vision and mission stated. Grant this council the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, a sense of aware fear and true needs of our people, personal peace in our lives, and joy in our tasks. Amen.
You'll join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one of the nations under God, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Then pardon you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Foley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Alwater?
Here.
Councilmember Altieri?
Here.
With the record showed, if one was good, the town will be on the better of the election.
Thank you very much. Item two, are there any requests to reorder lead items or emergency additions to the agenda?
No.
No? No dress code additions?
No.
If there are, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda, and a second, please.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Presentations, proclamations, we have none today. We move to item four, which are comments from the public regarding any agenda items. So other than this public comment, which comes at the end of the meeting, any specific comments about the agenda items? All right. If there are none, we move then to item five, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion was by Councilman Alwater, the second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, we need to do a roll call vote on this, since we have some items on this. So if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
With the record showed, the motion passes 4-0.
All right. On the mayor's report, just very briefly, it seems like we were just here a little while ago. So I have only one item of significance. I think Mayor, Mr. Alwater, may have more to say about this than the item under the utility section, but obviously, as reported in the press, there is a much larger number for the relocation of the sewage treatment plant for the city of Vero Beach, our provider. We hate to say we told you so, but that's astonishingly close to a number that we were tossing around two and a half to three years ago. And we were told by staff members at the city of Vero Beach that we were completely out of line, and the numbers were nowhere near there. My personal opinion is, I'm wondering whether or not that number's like the 250 million with, including the debt service. So costs are going to continue to go up. They don't even have a shovel in the ground yet. There are items that are missing, such as a healthy contingency, or really any contingency to speak of, and in addition to that, whatever environmental remediation that's going to be happening on that site. So we're going to see some shockingly high utility costs coming out of the city of Vero Beach. We are continuing to press other options, and I'm sure the town manager and the town attorney can continue to report to individual council members as those issues arise. Other than that, I have nothing else of significance to report. We did remove the tree. I'm sure some of us have gotten some inquiries about that. It's starting to look a little better out there, and my understanding is, yes, we will have a more aesthetically appealing courtyard that will be able to be used by people. With that, is there any comment or questions for me from council?
No.
If there are none, then we'll move to item 7A, which is Councilmember Alwater, who has a discussion about cybersecurity, a very, very important topic among municipalities, given the fact that, under state statute, municipalities are now prohibited from paying any kind of ransomware, should there be a hack on the system. So Councilmember Alwater, please.
Okay. This is a follow-up to the discussion I had with council when I reported back on the cybersecurity meeting that occurred at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference back in August. So I took some of the information learned there, plus other things I've been thinking about on this topic, and sat down with the town manager and some other attendees that are involved in our system. So if you, and your information in front of you on agenda item 7A here, and I apologize, I just brought this over today, and we're not going to do anything. So essentially, what we did was, at some point, I think it's appropriate for the town council to have a meeting in the shade where we discuss cybersecurity. At the end of the day, you know, like a board of directors of a corporation, public or private, we have the ultimate responsibility for ensuring that our cybersecurity, as best as we can, is up to snuff. So I put together some discussion items with the town manager and the attendees that listed, who were our website manager, our town IT provider, and a gentleman who's involved in the interaction with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and Public Safety. And what you see here in these discussion items that we went over is, it's derived from something called a cybersecurity framework. So that's supposed to be a set of procedures to look at all potential vulnerabilities that might occur in a company or in a government. The one that I looked at, it comes from the National Institute of Standards and Technologies, which is the U.S. Department of Commerce. And I didn't provide this to you, but if you want a copy, where the town manager has it, I gave it to him, he can forward it to you. But I took a subset of that, and I don't plan to go through all these items, but just to give you a sense of what we're looking at, is the first item that we're, and just got to make sure that all our procedures are up to snuff, is vulnerability management process. In other words, looking at things that we can do from the get-go to reduce our vulnerability to hacks. The major one is something called applying an application patch management. So for example, if you have an Apple machine or a Windows machine, you receive emails or notifications from Microsoft or from Apple that you have to update your system for a vulnerability that may occur on your phone, or on your Mac, or on a Windows system. That is the most important thing we can do. A lot of these vulnerabilities are caught. Microsoft and Apple, among other software providers, actually pay people for finding vulnerabilities so they can catch them, particularly ones which are called zero-day vulnerabilities, meaning that they can occur right away, as opposed to getting notification down the line. And as I mentioned in this meeting before, my son works for the federal court system, the administrative law office. He runs several cybersecurity risk assessment teams that go out to all the court systems around the country. And I've had a lot of discussions about it, and he said that's the most important thing you can do. So we're going to make sure that's all up to snuff. The second thing is making sure who has access to the system from administrator perspective, basically the one that can control everything, make sure there's no vulnerabilities there that somebody can hack in and essentially take over the system. The third thing is our data backup strategy. So I've been having discussions with the town manager, where he's looking at different ways to do that. You know, at the end of the day, how many backups should you have? The old saying goes, one more than you currently have. But, so we're going to take a look at that. As I mentioned at the previous discussion from Florida League of Cities, there's outside experts, organizations that we can join, which doesn't cost us any money to try to get knowledge about what potential vulnerabilities, or ways that we can make our system more robust, because, you know, at the end of the day, we're very thinly staffed, we have people here that wear many hats, so anything we can do to get outside help is important. And I'd mentioned in the meeting, that the last meeting, the CyberFlorida, with the Florida Center for Cybersecurity, which was created by the Florida State Legislature in 2014, they have 155-item questionnaire, and we directed that Compath, our town IT provider, to start filling that thing out. And he mentioned that he's done it for other clients as well. Question becomes, why didn't you do it for us before? But be that as it may. And then finally, we have obligations for training. There's different Florida statutory requirements that we all have to, that the town staff has to do. And there's actually some training for people in our positions, and I'm trying to see if they've done these down all the way, practically down in the Everglades in Miami. They're doing one out in Tampa. I contacted the woman who's running that, and I said, can you get one closer to us? There's supposedly one coming in Palm Beach, not that close. I'm trying to see if we can get one closer that people on the Treasure Coast can do. So these are things that we're going to move forward along with the town manager, you know, get a sense of things that we can clean up and so forth. And then at some point, I don't know, Jim, you were talking maybe early next year, you know, potentially having a shade meeting where all of us sit down and see the results of that, and we have the opportunity to ask questions and get comfortable.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, great. It's really solid work, Councilman, and I believe under, there's exemption under the sunshine law for a shade meeting as it deals with cybersecurity and infrastructure issues?
That's all correct.
So we could leave that into a meeting adjourned and then come back at something like that?
That was the law that I got passed.
Yes, sir. Great. Congratulations.
And we're going to have for several years. When it finally got to the floors of the House and Senate, there was no votes, and it was obviously signed by the governor, so I feel pretty happy.
Good. Terrific. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Alwater on cybersecurity? All right. Thank you so much. We'll move to item eight, which is the agenda item that is discussion with possible or probable action. We have three ordinances on second reading. Mr. Town Attorney, can you take item 8A, ordinance number 563, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 563, an ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, repealing Section 161.16 of the Land Development Code, required HOA condominium association building plan approval, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading.
Okay, thank you. Since it is an ordinance, and it's the second reading, is there any public comment? I'll give some opportunity for that. All right, there being none, is there a motion to approve the second reading?
So move.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
With the record showed, the motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Item 8B, ordinance number 564, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2023-564, ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, granting to pivotal utility holdings, Inc., DBA, Florida City Gas, its successors and assigns a non-exclusive gas franchise, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing the town with the right to impose monthly franchise fee payments to the town, providing for adoption of representations, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date. This is the second reading.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? There is no public comment. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Record showed, the motion passes 4-0.
Item 8C, ordinance number 565, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 565, an ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, revising, updating, amending, and repealing the code of ordinances of the town of Indian River Shores as follows. Chapter 30, Boards and Departments. Chapter 32, Council and Town Officials. Chapter 50, General Provisions. Chapter 98, Tree Protection. Chapter 111, Specific Businesses. Chapter 150, Building Regulations. Chapter 151, Electrical Regulations. Chapter 153, Housing Code. Chapter 160, Introduction, Zoning, Districts, Design Standards. Chapter 161, Supplemental Regulations. Chapter 163, Landscaping and Walls. Chapter 164, Signs. Chapter 165, Flood, Flooded Plan Management and Damage Prevention. Chapter 166, Subdivisions. Chapter 167, Environmental Regulations. Chapter 168, Development Review Procedures, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date. This is the second reading.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, sir.
Is there any public comment? There being no public comment, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
With the record showed, the motion passes 4-0.
All right. Thank you very much. Item nine, staff updates. Item 9A, Building Official Report and Statistics.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, our building official, Mr. Held, was summoned for jury duty today.
Oh.
He is performing a very important civic duty, and so he's on jury duty. So in speaking with him, there was nothing that he felt that he needed to highlight out of the report, but if there are any specific questions for him, just please let me know it, and I'll get an answer for you directly.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding building matters for the town manager in the absence of Fred? If there are none, we'll move to item 9B, which is the Town Treasurer Report. Ms. Christmas.
You've received my financial reports. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer those questions.
Heather, you and I had a discussion about the road and bridge fund.
I think it would be worthwhile just giving a quick recap of that to the rest of council,
since we're kind of, you know, we're running on fumes in that fund.
Yeah. That fund, we are using the last of the fund balance in that fund to cover the rest of Pebble Bay, all the work on the, on all the side, the curbing on there. We get about $8,700 a month for that fund, so it's, we're not going to have any activity next year in that fund, we need to start rebuilding it. The plan is to try to use a combination of, in the future, for roads and off-site drainage, using the $1 million that we've set aside for infrastructure reserves, and that fund to go forward with any of our future roads.
So we're pretty close to zero?
We're going to be zeroed out pretty much this year.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure. I was running the numbers, I came up with a negative balance, but Heather walked me through it, so it's just a little bit important for you folks to understand that, so.
No other questions? I will not have a report next month, because we are, this is the end of the month, the year, this week, and I should have a final budget adjustment for this fiscal year in November. Otherwise, the auditors come on Monday to start for this fiscal year's audit.
Okay. When's the next time we have to approve an audit appointment?
This is the third year, and then we have two one-year renewals, so we will bring it up for the renewal, but it'll be another two years.
Okay.
Great. Anything else? Thank you. Public Safety Department, Chief Stone?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As my wife would say, it's that Chamber of Commerce Day, isn't it? I wanted to go over briefly some of the response times that you have in your packet, and if you look on page 130, you'll see that those, some of those are starting to actually fall in line, as to where I thought they should be. And our call has been trying to get good data out of our computerated dispatch center, and although we haven't got the good data yet, but we have fallen back on manual process, and that is giving us accurate response times. So you'll see those start to trend down on the fire side, where they're supposed to be. You'll see the DMS side starting to equalize out on that, and law enforcement's really putting along where they've been all along. So we're happy that that's moving along. The, we had a, when you look at the law enforcement interactions with the public, those are actually maintaining some levels of consistency across the board, and we have been extremely busy over the past couple of days and weeks with our law enforcement efforts. And we did have a call today on the law enforcement side that I want to ask Mark to give you an update on. Mark was actually on the scene when everything finally stopped, and so, Mark, if you would, please give him an update on a pursuit began.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we had a vehicle this morning, about 9:55, that was just driving erratically, coming southbound on A1A. Fortunately, one of our officers was right there, had one of our new tradies in the vehicle with him. Vehicle was passing in the bike lane into the right shoulder, so he was passing vehicles on the right. Turned around to stop him, obviously the guy fled. It was a freshly stolen vehicle. It was a deputy from Brevard County that was taking a report but had not been entered into the system yet, so that's why our flock cameras didn't hit to that. Pursued him down into the city of Vero Beach, had great assistance with the sheriff's office and Vero PD. Obviously, the guy didn't know where he was going, because as he went down some of those little side streets in the fair, Vero Shores area, got boxed in and eventually ran into a tree and disabled the vehicle. So we were able to apprehend him. According to him, there was three others. They had all been stealing vehicles up in Brevard County. He got lost and thought he was still in Melbourne, and that's how he made his way down here. So it was a great job. Like I said, our officers were right there. In fact, even Lieutenant Ryer and Bob Leno, one of our service aides, was in another vehicle and actually witnessed the whole thing go down, too. So they were right there, right on it, and just fortunate. Bad guy went to jail, nobody got hurt. Has got any questions?
Was he injured?
No, no. Yep. Had to pull him out through the driver's window, because literally he was wedged in between some trees. One of the yards in the Vero Shores where he went to go around the stop sticks, there was a yard maintenance guy out, and he probably went a foot away from hitting him, probably doing 35, 40 miles an hour, so very fortunate, nobody got hurt.
Great. Well, great, great job. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great job by all, so. Any questions?
No question.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Anything for Chief Stone? No?
No.
All right. We'll move on to Public Works Department.
Just a real quick update. Pebble Bay project is almost complete. Paving's about halfway done today. We're looking at completion probably by Thursday at the latest, and we'll do a walkthrough with a punch list, final punch list on it. Indian and Seminole Lane, we just got approval for the engineering to repair the pipe that's damaged. The gas line is out of it. That's the only open products I have right now that, with updates on.
Great. Thank you. Anything for Larry?
No.
All right. We'll move on to Code Enforcement, item 9E.
Mr. Mayor, because Mr. Held was out, I had Sergeant Mike take care of a few things. I did want to let everyone know, though, that regarding code enforcement, as you know, we struggled a lot with a lot of people in town after Hurricane Nicole, with everyone's desire to try to get beach walkovers and all kinds of things fixed. An awful lot of it was done without any permitting, DEP, county, town, or otherwise. So our code enforcement officer, with the assistance of our Public Works Director, our building official, were out on the beach regularly, and they had a total of 60 beach walkovers and structures that were either in objectively unsafe condition that we, you know, tied off and, you know, unmarked, or work had been done without any permitting at all, whether it be DEP permitting, which is generally required on those walkovers in this new construction, or if it's replacement of, best way to put it, you know, the pilots that are going down into the ground, you know, past the dews. So we had 60 of those cases. We tried to work with everyone. There was a decent steam that suggested that some of the more frequently used contractors were indicating to people that they didn't need permits. We tried to address that on the other side of it, but nonetheless, we're down now to four, actually, three cases that are set for magistrate hearings next week. We do have four set for next week. One is a, I'll just call it a frequent flyer case, because we've had problems with it over time. And I point that out for two reasons. One is to still let you know the volume of what happened on the town's beaches after Hurricane Nicole with unpermitted work or unsafe structures. And then, you know, really, secondly, the benefit of having the ease of using the magistrate process. And, you know, our town attorney can tell you that it's a lot easier to schedule those, notice them, as opposed to have a board manage, you know, five people and try to do that. So hopefully, all of those will be resolved by next week, but it was a pretty big lift out there on the beach, and we do continue to moderate for a variety of items. One thing that we've done is, for those people that have come in remediating the situation in a timely fashion, we basically put on hold any daily fines, because they are objectively unable to cure any building issues on the due, because of term of nesting season. So anyone that would have to do something, we're giving a little leeway, because term of nesting season will be over 11-1. So that's, that piece on code enforcement. On the court, and thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Mayor, we've been, I'm talking to different designers, have another meeting with someone tomorrow, we're going to make the court more consistent and appropriate with how the town residents would expect a peaceful town hall to look like. As we get into the design phase, which we, the designer will be providing information to council and to the town about which way we're going there. The, just a very brief sector four update.
Are you continuing with code enforcement, or are you going into your town manager's report?
So I'll stand down until my.
I just was.
It's okay. Thank you for waiting that long. Apparently, my town manager would be greatly appreciative.
You were on a roll, so I didn't want to.
So no, no, and thank you. I apologize. I took some time from the gentleman for code enforcement, so I will yield that time back.
All right.
So wait through. The three remaining to be resolved, are they private residences or condominium associations?
My recollection is that the three that were remaining are private residences within the Johns Island community.
Okay.
I can come back to the town manager's stuff later, sir.
Anything else on code enforcement for?
I'm sorry.
All right. No, no problem. We'll move to the town attorney's report. Just one item I'd like to mention in the mayor's report, Frank, I just forgot. As you'll note, we're going to end well before 5:01, and we're trying to at least propose to council members alternatives to, well, this is just always the way we did things. You know, we always have the meeting at 3:30, we waited around for 35, 20 minutes. So I've asked the town attorney to explore the possibility of in future years, having a budget meeting in 5:01, which relatively, which is relatively short, adjourned, and then going immediately into the town council meeting, which is harder to predict in terms of duration. That way, we don't have to come, adjourn, wait for 45 minutes or an hour, and he'll report back to us on that, and then Mr. Harpring can talk to the individual council members and see if there's a consensus to change that, and other things. We've been trying to do that, but this is one that just kind of slipped through the cracks, I think, until, you know, we saw the agenda pack and realized, okay, here we go again, we're going to be waiting for a while. So anyway, with that, Mr. Sweeney, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and just follow up on that again. Our hands are tied, as is every other municipality in Florida, due to the statutory requirement. We simply have to have those budget readings after 5:00. So 5:01 is the earliest we can give it, statutory required.
Or on Saturday, which everybody.
Or on Saturday. That is true. We could have it on a Saturday.
I'd love that. I mean, alternatively, we could maybe think about starting this meeting at 4:00. If we go a few minutes past, if we go sometime past 5:00, we can do it. I mean, that might be one alternative.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, there are any number of alternatives. The only hard requirement is that the budget here be at 5:00, or 5:01, I should say.
Well, be at 5:00.
It cannot start any earlier than 5:01, but we could start a meeting.
And you hear that this meeting ran to 5:15, 5:16.
Correct. Any number of those. What the normal approach would be, because again, it has to be advertised and specifically stated, and due to some of the recent cases, we want to be very clear, so we would adjourn a meeting if we started, say, at 4:00, and we ran long, we would temporarily recess.
Right. So that's why I think maybe it would be better to start a budget meeting at 5:01 and finish it off, and then move right into the.
And if there were a remaining item, we could come back in and finish, if necessary, because I expect a budget meeting at 5:00. I do not have much report, other than to continue to echo what Mr. Harpring just said about code enforcement, is the special magistrate hearing process is working very well, and it's going to be the second time, and I just wanted to mention this as well. Not only has staff done an excellent job reaching out consistently on any code issue,
the staff done an excellent job reaching out consistently on any code issue, trying to get compliance, but even when we have the hearings, it's within the deference of the special magistrate to give additional time. So if she has what she would consider, you know, is a hardship case, she could say, I'm gonna give you another ten or fifteen or twenty days of compliance effect. The only one we've had so far, we gave an additional fifteen days, and despite that, the individual skill hadn't come to that compliance as of my last check. So I just want to be very clear, even though the process is there, we do everything we can from staff's perspective to provide every alternative before seeking penalties. Um, otherwise, the council's well aware of all of our filings with the state of Florida, with Florida Supreme Court and where we are on that. If there were any other questions that any of you had, please feel free to reach out with me anytime. And thank you.
Do those hearings tend always to focus on safety and compliance, or are there other issues that are occasionally brought to the magistrate?
Everything that's been brought so far and as you'll see from the code enforcement is, is typically lifeblood safety issues. Um, and again, Mr. Harpring has an excellent saying that I cannot remember to save my life, but it is the three E's.
Educate, encourage, and then enforce.
Right. And so using that background, now, some of his time, so I'll just go ahead and do that. Uh, you know, Sergeant Mike Pence does an excellent job of educating, and so does the building department and all the staff. If there's an issue, it's typically driven by the building code. There are other code violations, but educate and then encourage, please, all you need to do is go in and fill out the form, hire a contractor, follow up, pulls out a permit, whatever it may be, cut the grass, pull the sign. Um, and if that doesn't come, then it really truly is a last alternative to give a citation, give the formal notice that we will have in the hearing, and even if they come into compliance the day of the hearing, um, then we would drop it generally, so that would be the procedure. And, and I would encourage you, you know, if you are so inclined, uh, I do not believe that we are videoing or, uh.
Not those.
Not those, yeah, but we have the ability if you wanted to see any of it or anything like that, so. And that's all I have to report.
I, I sat in on a meeting, it's, it's pretty efficient, or here, excuse me, it's pretty efficient the way, where it goes and the town attorney's point, we're not looking to put money on like other municipalities in this camp, that I want, uh, maybe, maybe just looking to get things to get.
And, and just, you know, typically the longest part is the violator, potential violator, not really being sophisticated or understanding what that issue is, especially if it's building code related and maybe they didn't have a general contractor or something like that, so talking through the specific requirements, that typically takes the longest, so.
And a lot of these are for the protection of the resident because, you know, contractor maybe cutting corners, not, not the departments when they're supposed to, and those are really there for their safety, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I personally, I think it's a big improvement since we had a code enforcement committee that, uh, in five years, I designed council, I don't think met once before we went to a magistrate, right, so.
That's correct, sir. That completes my report.
Okay, anything else for Pete?
All right, uh, Mr. Harpring? Apparently I cused up all my time and my information. I apologize for that, I'm sorry. I, I do just want to follow up a little bit and council member Alwater may have some additional comment about the beach and shore meeting, um, uh, that, that he and I attended recently. Uh, but just on a few topics, I just want to give you some very brief update on the sector four status and where we are. Uh, first, uh, relative to the easements, uh, I, I've been in communication on a couple of occasions to include yesterday and today with the, uh, deputy county attorney that's handling all the easements, they are not, uh, ready to be sent out yet. Um, I had specifically requested that they put together a frequently asked question piece to go along with it, uh, so that's what we are on the easements. The thing that is, um, uh, that we're waiting for really is the county to put those together and, and be prepared to send them out, there's, we don't have any control over that, so that's, that's what we are on the easements. On the permitting, uh, it looks like that the county, uh, is going to go through the recommended permitting process, which is Joint Coastal Permitting, JCP, coming, uh, that DEP has been discussing. That could be as short as a three to six month window. The county is already in that process. Uh, the town is doing everything that we can to assist them, uh, you know, since we have some data and other information, so we've also talked to DEP, uh, as well, so we're trying to assist the county, um, to get that, that permitting, uh, going on now. Importantly, the permitting is not contingent on the easement, so the permitting is going on at, as we speak right now, and the, um, and the easement piece is being worked on by the county. Estimated cost, we're still thinking about six million dollars, it had been said previously five point one to five point six. I think the six million is not unreasonable as we sit here right now. Relative to the funding, um, I, I, you know, I believe in just some, uh, lack of a better way to put it, sort of cocktail napkin math, we've got over five and a half million dollars, uh, that the county has identified publicly in beach and shore meetings and elsewhere for, for this project in terms of funding. Uh, I don't think funding is, is going to be an issue ultimately, um, though it's not been confirmed by the county and when it is, we've not been, we've not been directed at least sort of preemptorily, where the money's gonna go, we believe, I believe, the one point seven million allocated for sector seven can be reallocated, uh, by the county, uh, and it could be reallocated in its entirety to sector four. Um, and that's, that's my understanding from some, some discussions and some, and some research that I've done. Uh, fortunately, we've got, identified three access points, um, our President Johns Island have an access point, we have an access point here, and the county has indicated that they will, um, use the Turtle Trail, uh, access point in the town, and, uh, so, uh, the access point piece is, is very encouraging in terms of the, you know, the timing to get it done for, for soon. Yes, for Sam, he's a, the Dune Restoration Project. Um, projected start date, based on turtle nesting season only, the earliest start date could be November first, twenty twenty-three. Um, because of the contingent pieces, i.e. the easements, uh, the permitting and the funding, uh, we don't know when that's gonna take place, but, um, I think it's fair to say that twenty twenty-four is on a reasonable timeframe, whether that's January, February, or November, December, uh, is as yet to be determined, uh, but we are doing everything we can as a town on the staff level and otherwise to assist the county in, in, in any of their operations. Um, so that's, that's where we are and that's, uh, that's all I have.
The duration?
I don't know. The, the, the actual piece, I don't know. Um, it, it, when I, when I say weeks, I mean, it could be, you know, six or eight weeks. A lot depends on the timing, the trucks, the, the amount they're getting, is there a?
Finding sand.
Yeah, and is there a delay in, okay, we were able to, um, uh, we were able to secure, we got, you know, a hundred trucks now, but when's the next hundred that we can get or after that? So a lot of that is very, very speculative in terms of, um, of like a start date and would it get done? The only thing I can say about the end dates is that in light of the very healthy turtle nesting numbers or turtle egg numbers that we have right now, it wouldn't be entirely unreasonable, based on recent history from DEP, just in the last turtle nesting season, to be able to potentially, and this is, I know there's a lot of contingencies, but to potentially secure, um, a week or two weeks or maybe the three weeks extra into the turtle nesting season, depending on when, uh, when the start date was in order to get the project completed. Again, completely, completely speculative, but based on DEP's, um, minimal extensions that they've had in the past, it's not, it's not unreasonable.
Do the record numbers of turtle hatchings help that? You know, the, the numbers are up.
I think so.
Okay.
But, uh, but as, as you know, Mr. Mayor, uh, people can argue it to either side, yeah. And that's all I have collectively.
Well, I, I guess we're on this topic rather than go to the, you folks have, have this information here, and, and the town manager pretty much, uh, summarized, uh, the sector seven, there's one million, one point eight million dollars, uh, there's gonna be an additional ask, I wrote down the asks for three point six, that should be three point six million, and I tried to write fast to put allegedly when we're going through here. And, and I think this is important that, uh, you know, you know, what Jim has done is get a joint coastal permit, which gives us a lot more flexibility, uh, down the line and, you know, with the help of, uh, our, our folks in Tallahassee, so just wanted to mention that, you know, I think he's done a great job on this. Uh, sector three, on the following page, which a portion of the town is in, there's some information, uh, there about having sand, uh, put down about a construction start twelve one, two thousand twenty-three. And during this, uh, beach and shores meeting, they had photos before and after, before it was early August, after it was nine seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, because we, we had all these, uh, storms going past, uh, with the big waves from offshore, and really you didn't see, you saw very little damage except for the city of Beer Beach, uh, boardwalk down the JC Park, they, they've gotten hit. And, uh, the, uh, the counts of turtles are on this pages as well, and it's a record-setting year. So that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Did you have something, Mr. Earl Carey?
Um, how many, how many easements are replaced and what's the percentage?
Um, was it eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, I believe, yes, sir.
We supposed to get ninety percent.
Ninety percent? Um, and let, let me say, what am I in the Senate? Let me say this about that, um, I'm sorry. That's, uh, that number is not locked in statute, it's not locked in Florida administrative code, it's an internal county piece that the county attorney's office feels comfortable with, for whatever reason.
And persuade the commission.
Yes, and, and I, I, uh, I have concerns about that as well, but I do believe that if, if we are close and it's a handful here or there, I, I think the, the town itself, my plan would be to really, uh, urge the county commission to, to move forward with it, because it would be, um, it would be a small number, one way or the other, off of the ninety percent that they, that they internally require.
They using the, um, modified sector seven easement or the, the original standard?
I was sent by the, uh, county attorney handling it, the modified one, the second one, and I think that was issued. Now, uh, I only qualify by saying I haven't received what they intend to send out. Um, so I, it's my understanding that they would use that modified one that changed that language, um, but I don't know for sure until I actually see it.
What's that? Anything else? All right. Uh, item twelve A, we'll move to council committee reports, uh, start from by right? Nothing? Um, I had the Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities last week. Basically, we welcomed back, uh, the former president, Vice Mayor, Joy Lee Caravallo, who's back on the league cities. She did, uh, I think, a terrific job as a Treasure Coast representative and first to be president of the Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities, um, and, uh, her common ground scene, I think, uh, was very well received and kind of encouraged all of us to start by focusing on our ingravments, uh, before we start looking for disagreements. So, uh, kind of reminded me of your education, you know, we have, uh, we're always gonna have differences of opinion, but, you know, as long as they're in good faith and we respect each other, it works fine. Um, we'll see how long this lasts, uh, at the national level, it doesn't seem to have any traction at all. Uh, the major report, keynote report was by the town manager of Felsmere, uh, he gave essentially a state of the city and was echoing, um, the residents' firm belief that, uh, whether it's true or not, the perception is that development is going way too, way too fast and way too much. Uh, so I think it's one of those situations where, you know, everybody, everybody likes the benefits that come along with, uh, with more housing developments and more commerce, but just not in my backyard. So, uh, uh, that, that I think is going to be an interesting theme, uh, in the upcoming year, um, as there's additional and additional development coming in, and I don't know if we've seen it in our town, but a number of the communities in, uh, in Indian River County are starting to see developers that traditionally are not from the Treasure Coast. Mr. Sweeney has private practice, so he may be able to enlighten some of this, that we're starting to see Miami developers and Palm Beach County developers, Martin County developers kind of working their way up here, thinking it's, uh, fertile ground for development. So something for, uh, not so much us, but pretty fully developed, the county and, and places like Sebastian and Felsmere, I think they're gonna have challenges. Uh, nobody can ever stop growth, it's really how you, how you control it. So, uh, it was an interesting presentation. I will leave the materials that, uh, that I had as, as usual for anybody who wants to have a look at them. Mr. Carroll?
Good thing you had me. Mr. Alwater? Okay, Utilities Commission, we didn't have a meeting because we didn't have a quorum, but the only reason why I bring it up is interesting, we've all seen three two nine six three, the increased cost of water and sewer plant, none of that has ever been brought in front of Utilities Commission, and the dollar figure, to my knowledge, has not been brought in front of town council. Ralph Boltman did a presentation on the, on the new water and sewer, uh, plant, the different contracting method, and I watched it on TV, you know, the plot of figures like that, and it's rather, uh, interesting.
Just, just for background, though, my understanding is that the, uh, the number was, uh, mentioned for the first time at a candidate's forum, taxpayers association, uh.
You're correct.
By the firm there.
Yes.
So, uh, he gave a number between a hundred and thirty-four.
A hundred and thirty, huh?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah. For a pretty, for an individual to complain if he wants something transparent and open. Uh, and I'll, I'll be blunt, I had a discussion, and when that meeting ended, the, the, uh, Cancer Utilities Committee, the Beer Beach Mayor was out there, I ran off the desk, literally, he was getting ready to go back in, in the, uh, in their offices back there where they sit and block him from being able to get out, and I said to John, at what point do we, what, what's the price where we stop on this? And, and try to come up with something else? He says, I wanna get that water and sewer plant off the lagoon, so the three corners of the go-ahead and people at the hotel or whatever ends up there, they don't, I'll go to the water supply, so, so where, where does this stop? Is it two hundred and fifty million? Is it half a billion? Where's the number? That was, uh, that, that was pretty tough. Uh, you brought up about the interest costs. I actually put a spreadsheet together to monitor this, the numbers have been thrown around, and you see under agenda, item twelve A, and I promise to go through this pretty, pretty quickly. So going from the top, and, and I, I have, I have two scenarios here, uh, which, actually the mayor addressed. So if you, if you look at the front page, the construction cost reported of a hundred and thirty-two million, I took the lower number, I made the assumption that if this, the city of Beer Beach borrowed a wo, uh, did what is known as a water and sewer revenue bond, that it would have a single A rate. And what I did was I got a set of rates from a report from a major dealer that's out there on the internet who I trust, and if you go down where it says maturity years and municipal A rate of borrowing rates, so I, there's basically a curve of rates starting with five years of three forty-two, going out to thirty years of four hu, uh, four fifty-eight, so you could borrow along those points along the curve, if, for example, you did a twenty year bond, you could issue a bond approximately at a four thirty-nine yield. So I looked at, I looked at two scenarios, one, which is ridiculous, but was brought up by the finance director who's since retired, Cindy Lawson, when I asked her, the Utility Commission meeting, how would you borrow a loan? She said, I would do a thirty-year bond payable all to, basically a big balloon thing, which is absurd, you wouldn't do that. But I ran that number anyway, just for the hell of it, so you would effectively borrow with four fifty-eight yield and the interest cost be a hundred and eighty-one million dollars. But o, 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 only a more would do, would do that. So the, the other alternative is I, I just said, well, they'll issue six bonds, uh, if you look down there, six equal principal paydowns of five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty years. So each bond will be twenty-two million dollars in, in size, and that is the right way to do it, because what you're doing is you're matching up the paydown of your borrowings to useful life of the plant. Buy, you know, a plant that has thirty years, uh, uh, useful life, has depreciation over time. So, you know, so by doing that, and so, you know, for example, if you go to the rates up top, go down to ten-year, if you use the ten-year bond, it'd be a three fifty-six and so forth, the total interest costs come very close to your hundred million, ninety-eight million dollars. So then I ran on the second page, a borrowing of a hundred and thirty-two million dollars, and as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, there's no contingency in there, so I assume a ten percent contingency, which is probably low, would just, you know, be conservative, so then now they've had to borrow.
Also no environmental remediation that I saw as well.
Uh, right, and. And there's no demolition cost.
Right.
So I think, I think that's going to take it way up over a hundred and fifty, just being conservative. Now, if they're borrowing a hundred and forty-five million dollars, and again, use that bond structure as I listed down below, of six equal principal paydowns, you know, six different bonds, but they fall on the bond market, serial maturities rather than one bond at the end, then the interest cost for that debt structure would be just under a hundred and nine million dollars. So that's what we have to look forward to as rate pairs. And with the, with the city.
May as well. Absolutely. What about page three? Page three? Page three would be, how much does a hundred and eight million plus retained in the principal translate into in terms of rate increases?
Well, that's interesting you bring that up, because town manager and I were talking, and the organization, Rothel, did a study. And I saw the output of the spreadsheet. So presumably, you bring the spreadsheet up, you keep all the other operational costs the same, and you just change the borrowings. It should pop out what you do rates would be. So I believe you made a public record request, but I assume you haven't gotten any heard of that.
It's never working for that. I think talking about that, we're working through getting exactly what we need.
Okay, fine. So, yes, I, I, unless the town attorney thinks otherwise, I think we have the right to, not the output of the model, but the model itself. Would that be correct?
There is nothing that I'm aware of under any exemption under the public record law that would protect this type of information. This doesn't go to anything that would be confidential or proprietary once it's in the hands of the city of Bureau.
Okay, which it is. So I, I want the Excel model, so we can play. So we're working, so you and I are on the same page.
So, comment, and then, then just a question. The first comment is that apparently there's a document that says they have this hundred and thirty-four, hundred and thirty-five million dollar cost estimate at least as of June.
Correct.
So that means they probably knew earlier than June. They had to know in May, April. So why does this matter? Why does it matter to us and anybody? It's because it translates into rates. The rate increase, the massive rate increase was done based on numbers that were artificially low. And they're going in the low, and hopefully we'll, we'll see just how high they're going in the low. And, you know, when I'm, when I'm out and people are asking me, you know, what's, what's your beef about this really? You know, we're not out to hurt the city of Bureau Beach. We're, we're out to see the city of Bureau Beach thrive. It's in our interest to see the city of Bureau Beach thrive. But this is just, this is just, you know, crazy to have absolutely no limit beyond which you go. And I wonder how county commissioners, three county commissioners that voted to have a long-term contractual relationship with county residents on the South Beach that are not citizens of the city of Bureau Beach feel, since the time they made the vote, they were being given numbers that were far, far less than this and believed that the rates were probably good as presented to them. So they're going to have, Jim, I know you live down there. They're, they're going to have some explaining to do, to their residents, that, you know, their, their rates are astronomically, going to be astronomically higher than the county earnings. It's just, I don't think that's an opinion anymore, that's a fact. So why does it matter for those reasons? The, the question is, we did make a public record request a while back for the status of where you are in financing this. Who's, you know, who's out there doing this? They have these two consultants that were aware of it, but I saw utility meetings online. At what point does this become non-appetizing, looking at the two bond guys here, to, to the markets? And, you know, what does it do for their ratings and other, and other bond issues down the road if they, if they really have to incur this massive kind of debt just for this project?
Well, they're, the bonds that they're going to issue, I mean, the way they should do it is it's something called a revenue bond, meaning that the payment of a bond is solely linked to the revenues that come out of the water and, and sewer operations. Now, the other alternative is issue a general obligation bond, which means all the taxpayers. But what has happened over time because of things like the city of Detroit falling under bonds? It used to be general obligation bonds were considered to be better bonds than revenue bond. That got flipped on its head because of what federal judges did. And for example, in the case of city of Detroit, where those bonds were issued, said, they said, right, the bond investor, that their payment is, is ahead of everything else. They put public safety pensions ahead of it. So they, they threw all of that on it. So in theory, they should be able to get, to get the forms done. Now, one thing they have to nail down is to make sure that parts of the rate base don't leave. And that would be a question as a credit rating agency analyst, that I would be asking the city. Are you absolutely sure and you can prove to me that the town of Indian River Shores, the South Beach are not going to turn out a lead? Because then that blows up the finances on, on them. So to me, that, that is sort of the, 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 the big issue. I mean, I mean, as an analyst, I'd also be asking, at what point do the rates get so high that you can either collect them or you have people move away? That, that would be the second.
Okay. Thank you. I think I understand. Bond, bond fees are never, at the firm Christmas parties, I was always in another corner talking to the other lawyers, not the bond lawyers. Too mappy for me. All right. We'll move on to the call to the audience. Are there any members of the audience who have anything to comment on? It's, it's you or nobody. All right. With that, we will adjourn this meeting, and we will reconvene at five o'clock to begin the budget meeting at five oh one.
Okay, yes, sir.
We're adjourned.